So.
I'm really meeting with their left shoulder of those.
Yeah.
So I, I have seven o'clock. All settling in. I'm gonna basically call the meeting order here and ask that we all stay up for the pledge of allegiance. Alex, if you would, uh.
Thank you.
This evening, I would appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
No mistakes this time.
Oh, okay.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Dan, how are you?
I'm good.
Good. You can please call the roll. I would appreciate it.
Paul, yes. Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher, yes. Griffin, present. Hubbard, here. Michelle?
Present.
Theo?
Here.
Alex.
Present. Very good. Thank you. Item C tonight is approval of the meeting minutes from our regular city council meeting of December 27th, 2021. So motion to approve events.
I'm with the three of the members presented.
Moved by person, thank you, Jim. Second.
One second.
Second by Fisher, thank you, Doc. Mr. Fisher, any comments on the meeting minutes?
I have none, thank you.
Okay, decision?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Very good. Other council numbers, comments on the meeting minutes? Okay. Yeah, please call the vote of group minutes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Aron?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. We have no free range for the space this evening. We're down to approval of the agenda.
Yeah, I know we give you the agenda as presented.
Moved by Fisher, thank you, Doc.
Okay, second.
Second, nice enough, thank you. And especially on the agenda.
Uh, just a quick query. The third item under consent agenda had actually described it as a discussion item. I'm wondering if that was erroneous and it's just intended to be consent.
It meant to be a consideration of approval.
The, the, the.
The tree proposal. Or to make winter maintenance.
Yeah.
It's showing up under consent.
He's saying that on the, on the packet.
Yeah, the language is a little special. I just want to make sure that.
Oh, oh, sorry, yeah.
I did go plug it out of there. And it's not received, so.
Yeah, it, it, it's supposed to be a consideration item under. Thanks for the clarification.
I still do want to move it out of there.
I just wanted to make sure it was. Other questions on the agenda? Okay. Please call the votes of group minutes.
Aron?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Uh, item after is declaration of consensus of interest. The government is declaring our ideas. Page two of this agenda. We have no public hearings this evening. So we're down to non-range participation. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak this time? Just please. Welcome, Mr. Sharp. Please introduce yourself and state your name and address for records.
I'm John Sharp. I've, uh, five, three, two, seven, Webster Church Road. New Webster Township. Why is a rep, Webster Township resident here tonight? I, uh, am newly appointed as the at-large member of the Dexter County Party of Harvard Board. And I take that role at large seriously. And I came here tonight because of your item L1. Air Station Guiding Principles. And I came to listen so that I could learn what your guiding principles are. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak to you? So, none? Nobody online, right? So we'll take a comment if it's there or I'll see if they have one or two. Um, without, um.
Our first city council meetings are listed at six o'clock tonight.
Yes, we will take care of that.
Thank you. Good catch. We are counting on meeting down. We'll move down to our third report from our Public Services Superintendent. And nor his resident lead. Yeah, thank you. Tim, welcome.
Thank you.
Well, we're into good holidays, good evening. Got the two-week report, a little shorter than usual, because you don't work certain mondays. But if there's any questions, I would take them.
How many streetlight allegations do we have? Sorry.
Streetlight as in?
Uh, I saw, sent streetlight allegations to DGE and I just wanted to help make a list that way.
Sorry, it's under DGW about halfway down, Tim.
It's approximately five.
There we go.
Well, we drive around pretty obviously, you know, make sure the streetlights. And then we also take home calls from the residents. Actually, I'll come into the office and make a list. Okay. Thank you.
Yep, I just had a question about the phosphorus, the violations that I submitted as a question. There's a response in the packet. I'm not sure if you're able to just provide a verbal update about that. If you could define who and the CEO is.
It's not, it's not, it's northern area in Blue Company.
Okay.
And so they have phosphorus levels. I don't, I couldn't hear your questions, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Could you just provide a verbal update about that? Mostly because I know watching phosphorus levels is a concern and so there are all these upgrades made and we're keeping a close eye on that. I just wanted to know whatever this brief update in the report, what implications, short-term and long-term that has for the city. Is this something that was on the city side? It sounds like it's from a particular user.
That was from, so what happened was they have us, obviously, levels that they had to maintain, phosphorus being one of those. They came to us with a new permit. And what they wanted to do is they wanted to lower their testing because it's obviously costly to them. So what we had done was we made an agreement that we lowered testing on their BODs and their suspended solids to come down to half. But in that compliance-wise, what we agreed upon was they have six months to come up with a reason or a way to get their phosphorus levels down. And then we're going to look at that after that six months. If they don't have that, we're going to put the testing back to what it was.
Okay.
If they are in compliance with that, then what we're going to do from the next six months after that, they have to put something in place. And as far as start something to get it to go down, then we'll obviously monitor from there. But sixteen's the level right now. I know, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but we sent it to the state of trying to get that down to twelve. And we haven't heard anything back from them in a while, so.
Okay, so this is, it's a user within our system that sort of had like an internal violation and you're working with them to ameliorate it. So it wasn't the city abduction that had a violation.
Well, not yet, but that's what we, that's what we gotta do. So when, uh, when we're talking about BOD suspended solids, phosphorus, that's what we're worried about with this particular. They've done great job a little last year. They've been compliant with BOD and suspended solids. We also have a surcharge attached to all three of them. If they were over that, they need to pay us going to cost. And we figured it out with a mall study that we've done, how much it costs for all three of those. So they've been surcharged, um, somewhere between three and $500 a year on the suspended solids. They're close, but like Tim just indicated, we got a new ordinance thing that's going through the state that if they ever get us back, it's going to be lower than that. So what we did is we took into consideration how good they're doing on BOD and how good they're doing on suspended solids, which saves them probably about $500 a month sampling. But part of the permit that we wrote for the first six months is we're going to give you this because you've been doing a great job. But you need to figure out how to fix this possible.
Okay.
We've got a little bit of wiggle room down there, but the state doesn't care. If they end up doing something or somebody does and pushes us over, then we've got to deal with the state. The state's not going to go into these businesses.
Right.
They're going to come to us. So we're trying to work out a deal, make it easier for them and get them in compliance. So we have six months for the process. You've got to come up with a plan. The next six months, we're going to be coming back. What, when are you going to start this?
Okay.
So.
Thank you. That's really.
Yeah, it's incredible. It's incredible, the impact that a beer-making facility has on a waste lot of people there.
Yeah.
And there's been, um, several studies done, at least one significant study. They had referenced a mall. M A H L, that's a acronym for maximum allowable headworks limits, is that right? So it was, the plant was studied and looked at to see how much it could handle on many levels. NUGO has, has invested thousands.
Yes. Hundreds of thousands.
In, in frequenting at the site to try and reduce what we see. And if they have a spill or something doesn't work, I think it's down to speed balance of that. So we can divert the waste lot of the plant so that it doesn't end up next to them, our plant. Gives them a chance to react to what happens. Clearly, that's just an interim term. It's an upstream user.
Thank you.
We're on top of it. They, they need to be very proud of you.
And that's part of, part of what we were talking about, that's we all came together as a team to make up that decision. As far as I would want to move forward with the whole phosphorus levels and everything, because we feel that, uh, they had adequate amount of time to correct the problem. So we wanted to put something in there to make sure that, you know, as we move forward, we're all going in the right direction. So we felt that was a good thing.
Tim, I have one other question. It's triggered by the comments that understood. There's a couple of references to the bio-solids. One, the transfer system, and then the secondary, and then the applied solids and all that stuff. Are we still generating energy?
Um.
And powering our plant? Or do we have, do we have issues still? I can't remember where we're at with, at least. At one time when we did this, the goal was to use the methane gas production.
And we do.
And power our plant a little bit, as I said.
Use the methane on that. Um, but once we dense, or excuse me, drop the level of the digester so much, yeah, it takes, you see, I was talking to Eric about this, it's crazy the other day about, and he said it would take about two to three weeks before we start to start producing methane.
To generate again, yeah.
But the boiler's up and we're, we're making that many gas. I mean, we got that face a few months ago. That's what you're.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to, we're back up.
Yeah. No, but you're right. We're not producing gas and we, when we all slide, our level gets up. Yeah, it has to build up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who else?
I don't have any other questions. Is there any other question? Thank you both. I appreciate your good efforts. Bless you. Thank you. Next up is our community development manager. Michelle, welcome.
I'm with Tom. And Jeff on the, uh, all of the decisions. Keep it down. Okay. Okay. Thank you, council. We're your patients while I come. Good. How is everybody today?
Good.
How are you?
I'm all, I'm all well. So now, Donna, Sam, Dee, Sean. Justin. Alex. Josh. I keep forgetting his name. Okay, so. Now that broken the tension in the room. Okay, you have my two-week report in front of you. You also have the update that, um, that Justin provided to questions. Just questions that were based on the report. Does anybody have any questions for me tonight?
Just, uh, can you confirm that 150 Yeppard still has the deed restriction that prevents food service in the lower two floors?
It doesn't prevent food service. It prevents.
Preparation.
It can't have a whole, a full kitchen restaurant like a Riverview, but it could have a Joan Rosy's, for example. Or remember, um, the little coffee shop that lived there and ran out of, um, Dexter Crossing.
Funny about.
Yes, funny about. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments for me?
I'll send that.
Yep.
Okay. That's it?
No, it's all good.
Ever, well, I wouldn't say it's all good, but it's not. If things aren't following the pipe either.
Okay, very important, a good look.
Thank you.
You don't have anything highlighted under J3 for board permission or other reports? So unless there's something, if somebody wants to add on the, the downtown street enforcement city manager report.
Funny, yeah, so, uh, glad for you to see me short, sitting in a short chair. Um, just two quick things. Number one is the ice rink is open. Yay. It's been cold enough that as of the end of the day Friday, we got our necessary three inches of ice and Kurt was able to open it. So we, we did start getting questions about when it was going to open and, uh, we were able to put out an email update and Facebook post on Saturday to let folks know that, hey, it's open and.
There are a lot of users over there.
Uh, that, that, that's what Kurt was saying. I had asked him about it on Saturday and, um, he said that there are people, people all over it. Next, I'd like to introduce our new assistant to the city manager, Josh Tangi.
Welcome, Josh.
Welcome.
Uh, Josh comes, comes just from Unetrix. Uh, and I'd like to give Josh an opportunity to introduce himself.
Yeah, my name's Josh Tangi. I'm, uh, from more to the southeast, uh, southeast side of Michigan. I'm over in Rochester now, but it's got a new location soon, a little closer to Dexter, so it's not too bad of a drive over. But, uh, wrapping up my faculty at Open University and that's just inside of Unetrix. So, uh, DDA is a company that does government data. So, uh, I'm really excited to join the Dexter team and excited to meet everybody. Good work, so.
All right. We, uh, we started introducing them to Art, Culture, Heritage Projects and, uh, I gave him a, uh, crash course on some election stuff today. So we're, we're getting them up and running. Other than that, uh, we did transfer the boxes from the basement of AD140 to the basement here. So, uh, the DAFD has full access to the room that they were looking to get access to. So I, I let chief know that they have to go ahead to get that scheduled, get the installation of the water software scheduled. And if they have any use for that room, uh, we can go ahead and take, take full advantage of it.
Very good.
It took all the DPW, Josh, myself, and the intern in our office, uh, Friday morning and Friday afternoon to, to, to transfer everything. So it was, uh, it was quite literally a heavy lift. So. If we still got to this all again?
So I heard from presidents on Broad Street that the, I think it's challenge to call it, the trace speed detector is pretty effective. And so, uh, mentioning is nearly as long as this, is that right?
That's correct.
And what is the, the cost of one of them that's out? If you can't respond, Ellen.
I, I, I want to say when we purchased that one, it was five to 7,000.
Okay. Uh, okay. So I think they were just generally curious how the city determined where it goes and when, given that they have seen it be effective in that location. When it goes away, can I call the city and say, hey, we want that back now? Can we get it in rotation next or?
Yeah, and, and, and that's quite literally how we do it. It's, it's based on calls and just creating rotation based on the complaints that we get.
Okay. And does that, did I track at all what the speeds are?
It does.
After data?
It does.
Have you done that or?
Uh, so, so I, I have not yet had a chance to really play around with it, uh, but we do have the ability to download the data and look at it. And actually, in talking with Patrick, uh, one thing that we want to do is take it and put it out on Dexter and Arbor Road. We're dropping it down to 40. Yeah, to, to, to see what, what those speeds are and see whether or not it would be valuable to ask the Michigan State Police to do a speed study for that, that section.
And the other thing, yeah, I don't, I guess they'd be curious, so always Jim has a recommendation. I think it was when we were up near Traverse City, we saw, they might have been solar powered, but it seemed like permanent installations on speed limit signs. But it's a solar power speed detector. It seemed permanent. I don't know the causes of those. I don't know what the short, long-term effectiveness of those is. I don't know. If we're either interested, I mean, I think the reality comes down to enforcement and I would like to, I missed the meeting when our sheriff's lieutenant was here. So I'm interested to learn more about enforcement options, but it seems like that's potentially interim, so.
Okay. Yeah, and one, actually, um, I think we're going to be getting a new sheriff's lieutenant. And so, um, once we do and get the opportunity to get activated, I'd like to invite that lieutenant and have a chance to meet everybody.
All right, thank you.
Any questions for Justin or Justin's show before?
No, I'm, I'm all set. Everybody's being up easy here. So happy new year, everybody. With my report, uh, with each new year, calendar year, coming to the start of our, uh, fiscal year planning process. Over the second half of our fiscal year. And we always leave that off, typically pick that off with our role setting sessions. And so I put my report and a couple of proposed dates that I wanted to get in front of everybody. Saturday morning, January 29th, and then Saturday morning, February 26th. And, um, I took a shot here, Jamie, tell me just about that.
Oh.
You had, um, suggested the idea of a specific name, community survey. And I said, I'd like to try and work that into a role setting workshop if possible. So I, I threw out there that maybe we could, um, talk about the idea of having our community survey at the first workshop and then, um, if, you know, and we can talk about it here if you want. If the people like that idea generally, we could come prepared to that meeting with some topics that we want to ask questions about. One of which could be the, you know, the guiding principles that we're talking about later on the agenda. It could be art stuff. It could be, um.
I think that's a good idea.
You know, roadway speeds, speed limits, you know, but all sorts of topics we could ask for, depending on how we want to do it.
I think you'd get a broader response if it, if it offers an opportunity to give it what I'm more than just a subject. I don't, I'm not, I'm not a statistician, but that seems to me makes.
Well, typically, we meet on those poll-side sessions with, you know, for a couple, three hours. We plan to, with our, our efforts, review questions and organize the questions. And we'll come to that meeting with some that we could, uh.
Yeah.
You know, we can get started on it. My, my timeline maybe isn't perfect and maybe it needs a little more time or whatever. I'm trying to get it started out there. But, and, and then, um, I would like to see us review, uh, the goals and objectives document that we, we looked at last year, but I don't believe, if I look back, that we formally adopted it necessarily. That doesn't mean that those don't change or go away, but I, I do think it means, or I do think it makes sense to have such a document that we do refer to and, uh, give updates in half-time. So there's been a lot of, many years of thought put into that and it's worth at least modifying or very forward again. And so that's really my main update. The classroom invitation with, uh, the Pink Side folks has been delayed due to the COVID concerns and just limiting the number of people in the classroom. So I'll let you know as soon as I get a schedule there to visit the town, so. Um, everybody's aware that our, our DEA effort to solicit proposals, our FPs, our FP process yielded no responses. So, um, yeah, I don't know if that's a indication that we don't have a good site or if it's an indication that it's just a test site. But DEA are sure we'll be discussing that, um, next Thursday when we meet. I just want to make sure everybody was aware of that. That's my report from the start of the new year. And if we have any questions for me on anything?
Yeah, yeah, I like seeing a bit about the survey. I was thinking that I would submit something into the January 24th meeting package just to have more time to redo it. So that's something I'll be doing on my own and, um, that either be on the report or if it was a special, I would miss. That, um.
I was thinking, Jamie, on that, towards that end, that if everybody's, well, assuming we like the idea, we're talking about that.
Right.
And I'm hearing objections from that. I was thinking that if we could maybe set a tentative deadline and have people send comments or send questions that they might fit in the survey. Maybe they have the perfect question, the format is the right way to make it adjusted so that when we put the goals and objectives workshop together, the summary of those could be there ahead of time. Or maybe they should write them first before we got together. Does that make sense or?
Yeah, and I think one thing too that sometimes contributes a lot when they're writing a questionnaire is they think that literally like the question they want an answer to is like the question that you have, is the word-for-word question that you ask. I wouldn't worry so much about what's the word-for-word question we ask and I would worry more about what is the information you're trying to solicit. And I'd be happy to, you know, together with help, if anybody else wants to help of putting that sort of concept into a question. So I would think more about what is the information I'm trying to gather and don't get too caught up in, oh, is this the best way to ask it? That's something we could figure out after the fact. Uh, so again, yeah, that's my thought about that. So, I mean, I still might submit something in advance just because I will have a lot of thought about it and everybody can submit whatever they want, whenever. And then I just was wondering if you could share just in your role as chairperson for DAFD, give us some idea of what that role is and. I don't understand it, so.
So our DAFD board is made up of three members who we represent. Two from our council, which is Zach and I at the current time. Two from what's your township, two from Dexter Township. And then there's a rotating seventh paddler, number which John has introduced himself as. His term starts, um, January this year. And so, um, this past year, I've served as the treasurer. And a year, a few years prior to that, I was the secretary, several years, secretary. So in roles of, my role as chair, I'm basically leading the leads. I will have some involvement with the chief in the pack of preparation or at least reviewing it. As Justin knows, I like to, you know, review items when they go in, I like to know what the agenda's about. Make sure that we're getting what I just think is most current information in there for the packet. I'll make sure that there's suggested motions that are, are there. I'd ask for a little leeway. It's the first time we worked with the chief in that capacity. So, and he's now a little bit, you know, I started the conversation already about, about that. But it's, you know, other than, other than beyond that, maybe what's important. You know, beyond that, it's really overseeing for me at that time. What, what, Jamie, what tends to happen? The chief, the chief asked me over the holidays, um, he said, so, you know, how often do I get to call you? You know, if you want to know this is going on. And I, I basically said, you know, I, I'm not trying to implement the day-to-day operations of the fire station. I've got enough to do, enough of things. If, if he feels I didn't know something, he's welcome to call or text or, you know, that kind of thing. But, um, the goal is not to take the role of the fire chief. The goal is to support the board and to help have an organized environment, hold, make decisions that are, you know, on the better, on the benefit of the community as well that they're covering. So, um, so I mean, it, it's similar to being, you know, the mayor position here is the one that organizes this board or helps oversee this board. There's the conversation and tries to make sure that, uh, we're having conversations that we need to have. So. And we, we change those roles or can change those roles annually. Every December, the bylaws, which you'll recall, we saw a version of those before, two months back, the bylaws require us to appoint, uh, people to the various positions. So I've had it for 2022. You know, that changes later, changes later. Happy to try and contribute itself.
So.
Just had a comment about the, the survey. I think I like the idea of submitting questions or submitting ideas. I think for some people it's easier in their mind to write it as a question, whether it's worth to order or not. Or for some people, it might be easier to do it as the idea. I would appreciate some conversation for each, either the question or the topic, to get it to the final point, to make sure that the, um, person's, um, intention or the interest is reflected correctly.
Yeah.
But yeah, I look forward, I always say that, Jamie, you have the expertise on this. So I look forward to see what's coming out of that exercise.
And well, if everybody can be thinking about what might, either the topics they want to touch on or the information that Jamie has indicated, that we want to try and, you know, learn from whether it's a question or a, or check the box type of exercise. Maybe we can bring those back at the next meeting. If it makes sense. And then Justin, a few of your team that helped compile and help us get organized. So we have a discussion on the 29th. Does the 29th work for everybody? Or no? And let's, let's, let's parse that down on our meeting calendar for, for goals and objectives and if.
I don't think I can say until noon, but I could say until 11:00.
Okay, well, what time does everyone want to start? It's 39:00 typically, 9:00 o'clock, is that reasonable? Okay, we do nine and then it's, oh, right.
Just that why I don't have a rule that's got, so.
Okay. Okay.
I was going to say, don't look at me, Roland wakes me up at 5:00 in the morning, so I'm ready to go.
I'm usually. I'm usually up too. So we'll start that if you want.
You guys go ahead.
We'll do that.
Let us know how many you look at.
Usually say nine can do a lot of time without early. Yeah, it's okay. So. I respect what you're saying about being, I definitely agree with that. And then if everybody could look ahead towards the 26th, you don't have to finalize that date now, but you know, to everybody, the next meeting, I'd like to just get them on the calendar and look ahead. We will be putting out some other dates. Typically, we do a city manager review in April. Justin's annual contract is July to June, I guess, whether we, we have it set up. But in the past, we've used the month of April to do our city manager review. That's typically done in a closed session. It's just he or she wants to do it. So we'll try to get a date picked for that in mid-April and then, you know, we can do the budget review workshops. The budget is due by May 1. Our draft budget is, it's presented on our about there, I think. So we have a couple of those. You know, workshops for the general fund and then the water sewer sheets, you know, as, as time allows, depending on which, which meeting. So. We'll try to get those dates ironed out so everybody can get them on the calendar. Sure. That's all I have. Anything else, Marie? See? Okay, we are down to the consent agenda. I didn't say where the three items.
I moved approved the three items listed on the consent agenda, bills and payroll in the amount of setting the order of preview with March, July and December meetings and the Everclear proposal for winter tree maintenance at a cost net to exceed 26?
60,200.
Okay. I am backwards. Yes, okay.
No, that's great.
That's it.
Appreciate that. Okay, motion by Fisher. Is there a second? And there's no discussion on the consent agenda. So Kim, if you would please probably vote to approve all three of them.
Fisher? Yes. Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard? Yes. Michelle's?
Yes.
Aron? Yes. Heel?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We're down to level one, unfinished business discussion item. Level one of fire station guiding principles and next steps. So we're going to all jump first to this one here. Yeah, I was thinking that we have, we have to start on several statements. Finally, at the last meeting, prior to the holidays, we asked Councilor Griffin to look at them. She was not able to participate, if you recall, at the early December workshop. We had, September, November, whatever it was. You jumped right in and gave a try to read there.
Linted to my brain. I'm sorry. It's really rough.
Maybe that's something to look forward to.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to just sort of orient you, orient you to it because I know, I mean, it wasn't necessarily extreme of consciousness. I did seek to create some structure and organization. So I have some general comments. I looked back because when we first started having a conversation, we had sort of a informal conversation as council. And then we were invited to submit some guiding principles. So I did that. And so that's what I kind of reshared again on page 42 of the packet where you said, you know, our obligations for our city ducks of residence. Generally, when I'm looking at issues that come before us, I wanted to find what the problem is and want to engage stakeholders. I want to look at information from a variety of sources. And then I hope with the council, we can come to a consensus on facts. So those I was thinking as my sort of guiding principles. I did go through, so I guess one thing, you know, when I look back at those, I would like us to take it to a problem statement at some point or problem page or two pages or something. But not to jump too far ahead. So for the guiding principles, and I had said, I think at the last meeting that I was worried that some of the statements might be too general or maybe, maybe just in a way that they weren't really helpful because people would, would be unlikely to disagree with them, I guess, in some sense. So maybe my perspective on what a guiding principle would do, and I had said was help us sort of choose between different options. But I know the people have different perspectives, different perspectives about what the guiding principle might actually help us do. I tried to go back for certain guiding principles and say, okay, you know, we talked about what, you know, what our mission is as it relates to the provision of fire and emergency service prevention, et cetera. So in fact, our charter, I said, well, you know, our charter kind of already speaks to that and, you know, says it in this way. Or the inter local agreement sort of speaks to this one principle and says it in this way. My preference is if there's, if there's language that exists in a document already, like the charter or the inter local agreement, I'm less inclined to sort of rewrite a principle that's restating something that already exists in the document. I'm fine pulling that statement or that general concept forward so that we have it in front of us. And then I guess I went through, you know, each specific guiding principle with a lot of comments. I don't know if it's worth our time. We go through all of them. It may be I'm less enthusiastic about that part of the process, I guess. So I spent a decent amount of the time then going through. I mean, I guess I could give examples of one if they didn't want to re, reiterate, I'm happy to talk through it. And then the next part of what I put together was trying to get to a problem statement or figure out what information do we have in front of us already that is letting us know what is wrong with the, the current building as is and how do those issues impact our ability to meet sort of the terms of the charter and inter local agreement when it comes to the provision of those services? And so a lot of, you know, what follows is I was just pulling directly from this 2015 Partners in Architecture Facilities Assessment Review where they're outlining here are very specific things that are concerned about the building. And then they do speak a bit about how that impacts operations. Although I was wondering if Chief Smith wants to weigh in more on that part of it. Yeah. So that's a general overview of what, of what all I put together, but I, I don't know how to proceed necessarily.
So I, I think we put together a lot of good stuff. I'd like to just zero in on page 42, if you don't mind, which is where you started a little bit. And maybe we wouldn't say it this way, but the, my opinion of the, of the the exercise that we went through for the guiding principles was to see if we could, it's somewhere in the 1A or above two range on your list, one through five. I, I perceived, I believe that we, we don't all agree on the problem. Okay. And I believe that the guiding principles was an attempt to be a consensus building step that helped us get into number two. That's my, if I was, if I could translate what I think we were doing to what you got here. That's where I would put what we were trying to do or trying to head towards. So maybe you could think that through a little better. That's how I, as I read this and then thought about what we were doing.
That's what you're saying.
That's why I thought it was fitting because I don't think we all agree on the problem.
Right. I don't know.
Which is, which is why, which is why in the past we haven't agreed on solutions.
Right. Yeah, I guess I don't know how the guiding principles we have help us define the problem.
Well.
I mean, I think we, we figure out our consensus on the problem by reviewing, I guess, external assessments of of the station and its services.
Right.
And then we, so I don't know how we, how, how can we figure out where we agree and don't agree on the problems that went out, like actually looking to the information.
Right. So you, you, you made the comment, or the, one of the corrections in the minutes last time that you, you look with a critical eye, I think was your phrase, on how the taxpayer dollars are used and such.
Right.
And my thought is that if we could get the guiding principles into some format that we reasonably agree are either questions or, or someone framing, you know, what we're trying to accomplish together, we could use those as part of the survey to get some of the stakeholder input that, as you, you said, is at least part of defining the problem. We have to define a problem, right? And some of, some of those, some of those things that might be a problem has either stated in the pages that are below or that the folks from OSHA may or may not have said are some of those problems. All of those have a degree of severity, right? And again, depending on how you choose, you choose to spend the dollar, I say you, we, you plural. But typically, how we decide to spend those dollars, we may address them all or we may address them in moderation at some level of, of impact that is deemed to solve. So, you know, the problem, does that make any sense? Or is that too general?
It's helpful to hear how you're coming, you know, how you're putting it.
Well, I'll give you an example. I'll give you an example. So you know, when one of those sentences that we read in the guiding principles in the six weeks ago or whatever, had to do with, you know, station design guidelines, right? One of them had something to say about how they've changed. And you know, so let's just, for example, I'm not trying to quote one because I don't know that. Okay. Zach might be able to help me here, but let's say, let's say.
Ultra bend or.
Well, you studied it more than I have. Sorry, I was complimenting you. You studied more than I have in that respect. You know, let, let's say that the, the distance between vehicles is supposed to be, I'm making up the number, 10 feet. And we have six. That might not be the biggest problem to everybody. Okay, now the stairs being, you know, a trip hazard that they use every day to go to the bunk room and the ingress, egress out of the bunk room with only one way. Those might be bigger problems, but the fact that we don't, we don't have facilities for, you know, female therapeutics. We don't have two separate bathrooms, you know, for users or some of those might be viewed as bigger problems is my point. By members of the community or those of us around the table. You know, and, and I, I don't, you know, obviously, if, if you, if you started new and we build a new station, there's a cost to get everything as perfect as you can get it. But some of those things might not translate to a absolute better level of service for our residents in terms of how the tax dollars spend. So again, I was, where I was trying to go with the exercise that I thought we were starting was just to see if we could come up with consensus on some statements that sort of help us highlight the areas that we want to try and focus our problem definition on. I want to go talk about stuff. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I have more to say, but I'll wait for other people.
Yeah, I haven't read this very much, but one of the things that was a little bit concerning to me is that we are part of an inter local. So when we write whatever we do, we're in it together. We're not superior to this group or to that group or whatever. Maybe I've been around too long, but I was here when they put it together and they worked hard to get it together and it's, it's gone fairly well for a long time. So I don't want to rock the boat there. You know, I realize that we can say that so and so didn't contact us and they didn't ask us when they built theirs, but that's all I'm wondering over the damn to me. I want to make sure that what we're doing works for everybody. So that would be my, my one comment that I'm feeling right now.
Zach?
Well, so I, I asked Mr. Brian to add in here the, the dates for elections. This is a little bit more of a nuts and boltsy thing. So my observations are we've always wanted to try to get the largest election to, to provide input to large questions. We switched our election years to be on cycle with the even years as opposed to the odd years. Oftentimes, folks who want to get millages for whatever purposes will do it on the weird elections, which I'll say here be May 3rd or August 22nd because smaller groups that are very interested are more likely to come out as opposed to more people. And so in my mind's eye, November of this year would be the ideal election date to put this before everybody because it's going to affect everybody for a long time. If you do the math, that means there are 14 meetings between when we leave here today and when we have to submit something to the clerk, 14 regular meetings. I bring that up because that's not a lot of meetings. And if we want to get something here, the, the next time we're going to have an election this big is going to be in 2024. So I offer that to keep some feet, some fire underneath our feet. It's like we're playing volleyball on a hot beach that we shouldn't sit for a month or two and, and sort things out. We're not all going to agree on all of these principles, on all the solutions. We're going to reach a point where we get a majority and we have to rip that Band-Aid off. And then we try to make it as good as we can to listen to the opinions on the dissenting and try to make it better. So while I, I laud the efforts to to kind of step back, remember there is, there is the clock ticking. That's all.
So.
Yeah, I, I agree with Zach on this about the, the November election. I was also thinking that that's usually, you know, other than the presidential election, the next one that gathers the most people is the midterm election. And that's, to me, this topic warrants that, that number of people. So I agree with the desire of going with the November one. For me, what I was thinking of the, the exercise and the conversations we have been having is that the guiding principles exercise will bring us as the council together to have some overarching attitude towards approaching this problem. So we are agreeing in some things in terms of the the attitude, the, the principles kind of or values that we are putting into this discussion that the safety of our community is important, the safety of our firefighters is important. To me, those are the, the things that, the values that we want to we care about and we want to represent in, in our discussion of the problem and then coming to the solution for it. The problem statement for me should be something large enough as a, as a beginning for us to all be able to fit in it before we get even to the details. Because if we start with the details of it, then it can go all over the place. And I agree that we only have very short number of meetings. So a problem statement such as we agree that we need to have a solution for the fire station. And then coming up with a plan of how to approach that different aspects of it and maybe categorize talking about different parts of this problem versus making the problem statement as trying to fit various details because we won't agree on those details. But we all agree that fire station is an issue that is priority needs to be discussed, needs to have a solution. I think that, that we agree on. And then dive into details based on different categories of conversation, whether it's, you know, various parts of building and, and things like that and have our opinions on those details. That would be my sort of opinion, is my suggestion.
So do you want to keep going with the guiding principles discussion?
I think we have a good guiding principle, set up guiding principles. If we all can see parts of those principles as something that we can apply to our conversation in terms of values that we hold in this conversation, then I think it actually looks good. And I think Charlie Wardman has done a great job of putting our thoughts together in some of those. It might be, need a little bit more refinement. But I think the, the general statements of guide, guiding principle to me are pretty much there to say, okay, these are the things that are our values in, in this discussion. And then we, we dive into, okay, what is the problem and how do we want to categorize and solve? Or talk about the various aspect of this problem that we want to solve.
So just funny thing going on, so is, is there a list? Within the package that you consider to do that, list of guiding principles that you're, you're referring to? I've read several versions of them aside.
Yes, I, I think to me, uh, what I would have asked from, um, Carly Wardman, from Megan would be to. Um, put the statements together of the, the three groups, there are a lot of similarities of each statement that can. Be combined and, and then we'll have a set. And I think Jamie has also provided, I appreciate the parts that are, um. With her not being in the meeting to tell us what she was thinking, um, but I also think that. Her thoughts of that a statement is there and, and the group statements that we all worked on are there as well, and I think Megan can put them together. Into one statement. That would be my suggestion, I think we are pretty much there.
I agree, I think that's the next, that's the next step that should be attempted from once. And once. Justin, do you think that you guys could do that, or try to do that?
If I made one more quick point, I, I like the detail, um, Jamie, you provided on different things and I don't want to lose. These details, I think there is definitely a space for. When we get to those categories of conversation to have these there and, and look at them as part of that conversation, and I want to be clear that. I value those.
I don't know if it's a guiding principle to add, um. It seemed like it was maybe into that in some comments that you made earlier. I don't know that, I think it's our will as council to design a building and me, I don't know that anybody here thinks that is their role to design a building. Uh, so I guess I'm curious to know what other people think, how. In order to meet, you know, our obligations to the charter and to the interlocal agreement, you know, for example, to have. You know, the interlocal agreement says that the main station or however that's phrased, I don't, I can't pull it up right here. Uh, will be in the city of Dexter and, you know, those operations involve X, Y, and Z, you know, they'll have, this is time of campaign forty five, I guess. This is the center of operations and control, the department shall be located in the village of Dexter, the substation being subsidiary there too. So that means from which vehicles are dispatched to respond to a fire rescue or emergency medical treatment call, et cetera. And what, what functions and responsibilities they should have. So, you know, that's what we need to do for the interlocal agreement is have a station that will provide, that will be the center of operations and control. What does the center of operations and control look like? I don't know that that is our job to determine, or I'm curious to know what people think, our level of input on. What that building looks like, how much of that is up to council versus how much of that is the chief? Um, or D A F P, and I had questions later on, I don't know what the role of D A F P. Is, and this is, I don't know, it sounds like they did not have a role with the design of the other stations, um. So I guess when it comes down to. Number of bays or things like that, I don't know if that's our role or not, so I'm curious to know what people think, do you think that's our role as council to say, no, we want five? I'm not a fire chief, I don't. Do that, so I don't know how I would even describe that.
Well, I'll throw out a metaphor that I like to use when I talk with communities about zoning ordinances. So zoning ordinances, most people think they can see it, they know zoning, and they want to start taking this stuff off. That can be very challenging, because there are lots of branches that will hit you in the head and cause you to violate state law and, and the federal constitution and all that. So the metaphor I use when I start working with folks on zoning laws amendments is imagine we're on a sailboat. It's your sailboat, you say, you've paid all the, the stuff, but it's really complex. You want to go to that side of the island for the sunset, that side for the morning, that side for, for breakfast. You go put your sunscreen on, lay out on the deck, read your book. You kind of set the policy, the agenda of where you want to go. Folks who have skill reading the, the charts and the wind and knowing how to tack. And how to keep the keel from busting off on the bottom and from flipping and the tides and the waves. They're the folks who actually do the maneuvering. So for policy discussion, I'm going to use example what we did with the, um. Wastewater Treatment Plant, which I thought worked well. We said we wanted to have something that was efficient to run, even if that meant we had to spend a bit more, something that staff would be able to maintain the equipment. That would meet, um, our discharge requirements. And we set staff off and they did a bunch of tours and they said, these are filter systems that we know will work. This will be more efficient and it ended up coming up a little bit more than what we wanted, so we, we cut some stuff out. So for a fire station, you know, there are lots of key things that you can do. And the, there's no two communities have the fire station that looks exactly the same, because where you put things. Depends on what type of calls you respond to and even when you respond to calls. So if you have lots of calls that come in at night, you're going to put the bedroom quarters closer to the bay, if you have most of your calls that come in the day, you're going to have a day quarters closer to the break. So, so a little variation there, so. The type of larger policy discussions are. Do we want to spend less money now or less money over the time, the expected life cycle of this? Do we want to allow for it to be expanded or not, or, or how hard do we want it to be to expand? Um. Those, those types of things. Um, you know, so one of the, the questions, uh, if you look at Dexter Township's fire station. They have all of the, the non-bay stuff on one side. They did that deliberately because they wanted, if, if they wanted to expand in the future, they'd just keep adding bays on the side. Where that becomes a challenge for a main station is you have a lot more stuff packed on one side. And because most of the, uh, on-call folks will be responding here, that means they have to go through larger areas to get to the equipment. Versus the design that you've seen has all of the equipment on one side of the bay. They park their car, they go through twenty feet of building, they're already in the apparatus bay as opposed to winning their way through the stuff. So kind of the policy decision I see there is, do we want to accommodate the fastest response, which means we have to build it larger now? Or do we want to build it whatever size is the minimum now with the understanding that in twenty years, it's going to cost a lot more money to expand? Um, sorry if that wandered a bit, but, um. That tends to happen, I guess.
No problem.
I'll, I'll throw out a question. You folks believe that we could adopt. Guiding principles and, and so what I see, we're not all going to always agree on them for our next meeting. One of the things that I recommend is we try to cut it to like ten or nine, kind of tighten it up. And have like a break choice voting, everyone gets three or four stickers and whichever are the top ones, those are the ones that we come off with. We're not all going to be happy, but we kind of accept that. Is that something folks feel we're comfortable with doing? The end of this month?
Yeah, however, however we can get to a list that we could stick around.
Do, do we want to do that in a workshop format? And then officially adopt at the meeting?
By me.
People can't submit the emails because of, uh, like a meeting dilution or certainly can just be submitted electronically or no?
Do you, do you, do you mean your, your preferences?
Right, does that need to be a meeting?
I, I wouldn't.
I, I have no problem with the suggestion to have, a combination of suggestions, so I mean, if we take some hours. Uh, guidance, we're almost there, they have staff. Put together a list of, however many that ends up being, something greater than maybe nine. Just use that number and then they have a workshop. At six o'clock on the twenty fourth, we can do, uh, an exercise to narrow that down, buy it or whatever to get to. Decide a number, I just, that'd be great, because we have an action item on the agenda for that, you know, if we feel ready to go with it. We can be prepared to adapt that night, so that everything goes properly, they're all here. Or not, unless you're here to do it, that's good. That's good, that goes to that point, it's that setup, so that we can, if I lose those. In whatever our community survey. Actually, it's. That's all I can say, I'm impressed. It's not speaking up. Oh, it wasn't.
Does anybody want to add something about, I mean, I think it is a guiding principle. This idea of. Whatever solution. What is the life of that solution we're looking to achieve? Twenty years or fifty years, do people feel like that's something that is at this level of, or of the steps or not? Um.
I think it's, I think it's an important thing to.
I think it's a great question.
Have a, a perspective on, yeah, because.
I'm not saying we need to come to an agreement, but is, is that this level, is it this level, like?
I do this. To some extent.
Right. I mean, I, I'll just share that I don't. With the information I see so far and given how long this conversation has taken place. If, you know. Yours, how, how, how far it predates me, I am less inclined, uh, to pursue a longer term solution than a longer term solution, because I won't want to. Get ourselves into a situation where we have a return term solution, then it takes. An additional twenty years beyond that to address any limitations at that point, so. Generally speaking, that's, that's where I'm at, I'm looking for something that's a longer term solution, uh, but I don't know how, how we formulate that or if that can see or something later.
So you were at a. Based on, we need a longer term solution.
I'm saying whatever solution we adopt, I want it to be one that we project will last us longer as opposed to shorter, so maybe we'll have. Two options and one will be the twenty or one will be the fifty or whatever it ends up being, I, I'm on the side of the longer solution, just because I don't want the city to have to revisit this conversation. For a while.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to assume, I'm planning on the process, right?
And it's just going to say. Except if you ever make, like, see now, I'm inclined to go to.
What the finances will allow, right?
Well, I think that's something that could be, that's, that's something that should be asked in the constituents too. But it's a lot of hands down.
No, I don't, I mean, it's, sorry.
I just wanted to say that within that discussion, which I obviously think is an important part of the discussion. And we keep throwing out twenty year and fifty year, is there not something in between those two things? I mean, it just, I just want to throw that out there as.
Thirty-one years.
Yeah, who knows, I just.
I think that what you're saying though makes really good sense, that's one of the things that I struggle with, is I don't know what it is that. Everybody's trying to put before, you've got a date, you want to put something before the public, what do you want to put before the public? We don't know, we don't know what we're asking for, we don't know if we've gone to the community and said. This will get you this, this will get you this, this will get you this, how much do you want to spend? That's the part that's really difficult for me, is that, you know, we're talking about, I want it to be for X years. We, I don't know how to get us to that point, but that's where we need to be.
Yep, and, and my reminder was just for us to keep working and not.
I was just an example, you know.
Well, and, and I can speak to the timeframes, um, so. One of the things I heard constantly when I was at the fire design conference in Chicago was you should design your buildings for fifty to seventy-five years. Now, I never asked any of them where they came up with those magical numbers. My guess would be that based on the amount of investment we put in the building. It should be expected to last that long and that's where you cover your costs versus if you're doing something every twenty years. You're going to cost more in the long run. Um, but I, I will ask some of those folks for better guidance on where they come up with those numbers.
And that's, that is all, the timeline stuff is important, I just want to go back to the, you know, the wastewater treatment example, it's parallel with this process. We made a judgment to invest. And the equipment we bought might be obsolete in ten years. And the requirements are going down, the regulatory requirements are going down and changing. Right, on the fastest, we put the best equipment and we confirmed at the time. And then they, they gave us limits that were actually stressing or testing the, the limits of that equipment. So there's probably, you know, there's, there's going to need to be, I don't want anybody to think that we just did a fifty year thing in the wastewater thing, there's a lot of what we just built, the building or whatever. You know, could get you that long maybe, but there's going to be components of this that will evolve over time, no matter what. In some way.
And I guess that sort of feeds into something, I was just thinking with regard to that. You know, how different population, how different is the city in all population wise realistically between now and fifty years from now? So I think for me, part of the discussion is. Like, are we planning for fifty years? With a larger population in mind, because I don't necessarily think that should be like a big priority, because where, I mean, unless we annex a whole bunch of property. Where are these people going to come from? And so I just want that to be part of the discussion too, like I do understand that, you know. Technology, you know, you know, things will evolve in fifty years for sure, but. I think that the, the population aspect is something that's a little more static.
Good point, so that's your way of.
Yeah, thank you, um, so this, this conversation we just had about the dates. Tells me that this is part of the problem versus the, the guiding principles, because problem part of this project. Is that there are various options and various opinions and various things to consider, the guiding principle is not. Options, right, it's, we value the health of our community, we value the health of our firefighters and so on and so forth. So to me, that part that is, um. The discussion of the, how many decades should this be is part of the problem that we are trying to solve and we have different. Thoughts and opinions and we want different expert information on it to get, so it's one of, to me, has always been one of the categories of. The problem.
Yeah, that's fair enough, good point.
No, no, I'm, I'm just listening to what you're saying.
I know, I'm starting to break the rule two times for every person.
You don't have that rule. Uh, in terms of the election, of the timeline, I'm not, I don't know. What, if anything, I want in a ballot either, but I think the principle I'm going to knock off of. Is, if the solution, the majority decides on is one that requires voter approval. I want that to go to the voters at least five months. I don't know what that is and I don't know.
I'm sorry, at least what?
At least by the November election.
By November.
Right, so, so it isn't that the guiding principle is something will go to the voters in November, it's that. I want, my guiding principle for this conversation is that if we need public approval for something, I want. To, to ensure that this conversation, we reach that decision in time for a November election. If it comes, you know, so that we're not just like, well, we don't know, so we're not going to, we're not going to plan for that, because we don't really know, that's what we're going to do, well. I want to make sure that that accounted for, even if we don't take advantage of it, so that's all I need by that.
Okay, so we have a tentative plan? You have a plan, Justin?
I, I do, um. Kind of kind of building off that discussion though, um, if the, if, if folks are feeling like November. For a, a ballot item is desired. How? How many work sessions between now and then? Are we looking to do?
Let's start with one. At a fortnight.
Yeah, and maybe if we do that in that work session, we can figure out the answer to that question as well as how many public meetings do we want to, I mean, not public meetings, obviously, this is one, but like. How many special meetings about this topic do we want to hold for the community?
Well, and we might get some insight from the survey too on.
Fair enough.
Too, we're using as sort of a, floating some test questions. Right, I don't know what kind of argument, so. I don't think we know. Maximum according to Zach, fourteen. I didn't.
But, 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 but I wanted to, to throw, throw that out there, that if we do have fourteen meetings left and. We're trying to, to get this wrapped up in fourteen meetings, then, um. There, there may be some, some work sessions as a part of that.
Yeah, I know, we have a lot of opportunities over the first six months to meet together, so we'll figure out how to make sure we're keeping the topic moving. Okay, so this will be back on the agenda next meeting with an action item to agree on guiding principles, we have a six P M workshop. Um, whether it's a sticker exercise or others, I'll let you put it through with Megan. Whether it's a sticker exercise or others, I'd like to throw it with Megan. Maybe you can suppose the best way to get us there. Okay, number one, I'll do.
Sure. Now, we don't know for sure what's going to happen in the future about who's going to be on this town. So, so a scenario that we have decided that we are going to go to the new fire hall in, in November for November ballot. And then we have three candidates to come out and say they don't want that, that to be on. Emily. And then August, and two of our electors, three of our electors. Not based on any qualifications, just on this one issue. I think that's a possibility.
I'd say in that case, the millage would probably fail. If three folks opposed to the millage.
Well, the millage may fail. I don't know. What you don't know what what they feel about how the decisions that we may already, the logic that we have got behind to get this point. When I've talked to a number of people this recently, and they say, it should never have taken this long. Let's get on. Let's, let us vote on this and let's move on. And I think that's a possibility that 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 could happen, but also there's a possibility that it just fails for another reason. It's too expensive. So I don't know. I think it's, I think it's we're not playing with you know, with funny cards here, but we could be playing with funny cards if somebody comes out or two or three people come out and say, I'm ready for city council, but I'm not going to. Have we got one new file?
Well, let's try and give, let's keep going in the direction we're going. Let's try to get around the questions we want to ask the guiding principle set. Right? Formulate the question. Interest here. It sounds like two parts. Having something on November ballot. Let's figure out what that question needs to be. There could be a lot of questions, right?
Yeah.
We gotta get there, right? Let's, let's, let's try to follow through the process that we have outlined here. Appreciate you putting the other thoughts on it. It's getting into what we need to do to get to number two is just then focusing on the problem and going from there. Thanks for talking for a foot of time, Curtis. We'll make sure that's on the next agenda course, please. Okay, thank you, everybody, for your participation in that. New business side of L two, I'm sorry, unfinished business of L two. Don, thanks for your interest.
Thank you, guys.
We'll give you a tour next time. L two is consideration of Fourth Street sidewalk connection, eight seventy-one of the back. There are a, I'm getting to that. Is there a motion to do anything? Is there a motion not to do something? Zach, sorry.
Yeah, well, so I am interested in getting additional options for this project. I'm open to various ways of doing that, just discussing or making a motion to postpone, I suppose.
Good much, Mr. Scott.
Yeah, hold on just a little bit before we get to there. I'm interested in trying to just take out some payment and put the sidewalk. Because not knowing how long this thing's going to be there, I don't, I don't particularly fear taking out thirty feet or whatever it would be to fill what's necessary for the sidewalk without a canyon wall. I don't think we should fill the thing with a canyon wall. I don't know what the option is, but I mean, if I'm looking at Paige, I think I'm on seventy-three with the picture of the colors and the hatches. You know, I think there's a logical joint or something there where some of that could be removed or just something across and turn it into grass next to the sidewalk. And then you deal with the, if it's important enough to have a sidewalk there, I think we're determining that because it's close to the parking areas and the eighty equal plan area, so I'd be able to take people onto the path in an idiotic way. I say we just expand it to include taking out some of the concrete. That's, that's my personal thing. I'm sure there's a you know, there might have been a data point that showed that there was something under the concrete at some rare spots, but I don't know if it was in that corner or you know, it's definitely look at that, but if we're not digging down too far or filling up out that we could cap it with clay, wants to say, you know, the concern, the reason we've left the concrete for so long was that it doesn't allow water to seep through. It runs off it. And if there was anything under it, by leaving it impervious, not allowing the water to then move it for my but I'm not suggesting taking out the whole thing, but I that's my thought. I don't know what that would cost, but that's kind of where I'm I throw that out there.
I'm not quite sure. I just, yeah. So I'm looking at the same picture. So what would you think differently?
Well, Gary, because of the grade, because there's steps here, right?
Right.
And because it was down, you're going to have to fill this to make this level to come across.
Right.
So you can't really do that without taking out some of this. So yeah, I'm taking, take, take out a big chunk of this. I mean, it's not really pretty anyway.
Yeah.
Or, or I don't know, take out up here, come across and, you know, just take, take this out of here and then.
Oh, right. It's supposed to having the retaining, right.
As opposed to building retaining wall, you need to elevate the sidewalk and have a total high point that's up here.
Yeah.
I mean, let's just make it look as natural as it is and have the grass, move it up to the grass around it, so.
And there's no way it can be even closer to the curves there? I thought it's just, they're all grass. There's no way a sidewalk could be closer to that?
Because it could. I just think there's a slope there. I think, but you're going to have to level it out at some point.
Yeah.
There, there, there may also be utilities.
I see my meant to oppose.
Yeah. I, 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 I didn't look at it, but.
Do you think that would be in between the costs of the two proposed options?
So I, I know Stacy with O H M is here to, to put the, the draft costs together and walk the site. I don't know if she has any, any thoughts?
Um, I don't know for sure if the cost would be less than with the, at least they were the receipt call, but we certainly will make sure.
Sean. Yeah, Dan. Yeah, well, please, absolutely. I'm a part of the team by the thought. Please. So you're talking taking all this concrete off? Yeah, or some, some, you know, some version. Okay. Just get rid of this little hole or part of this enough, enough that you could fill this with natural soil over it.
I got it.
And blend it. Then you'd have grass here on the side.
So of, 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 of the, the primary square that's shown, I think Sean is thinking take some portion of.
A half of all that square or whatever, just not really that much.
Yeah.
If we're talking about going into this area, besides the environmental concern, this is the G D A's property and this is something we want the G D A to talk about as far as.
Yeah, we certainly have to get their cooperation since we don't.
And would it help you be part of more, help me and learn them both that it has some eventual cost.
Yeah, like I, like I said, I think there's ways to solidly cap what we would be removing with clay or something else to the same level of impervious. You know, to facilitate the head goal with the sidewalk. Keep in mind, the G D A did ask us at the last meeting or prior to, you know, taking a little look at the how many eighty blind spaces we have around town. So that has to be brought back to the side. To sort of do that.
Yep. So my thoughts are I'm not worried about putting something in about waiting till thirty, forty-five flips to put this in. That'll be a while and it's not too difficult to pop this up. We can get it back home, do it in ten minutes. I would prefer to spend less money rather than more. And I think if it is possible to cut out some of that concrete and make it easier, well, slightly easier to redevelop the site because we can say, look, we pulled some of it out already. I'd also be interested in hearing options for other surface that may be ADA compliant, like the crushed limestone, the fine crushed limestone may not be as pleasant a sidewalk, but it may be a decent short-term option. And I do think there is great benefit to providing that connection. Not having a kid, I haven't really paid attention of how to get from a car to the trail because I always just walk. But I see great value in having that option right there.
Okay, so I'm, I'm wondering if we don't. That's technically should postpone to our different options, is it? So. Move by Michelle. Second by Fisher to postpone. I jumped to that. I have a special note, a special note.
Do you know where we might be able to get this back? Next meeting or?
We'll, we'll shoot for next meeting. If not next meeting, then we'll follow.
Okay, please follow vote to postpone.
Hubbard, yes. Griffin, yeah. Fisher, yes. Michelle.
Yes.
Aron, yes. Cousins.
Yes.
Keough.
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. Appreciate Stacy as being here with that. Realize, sorry, unfinished, I don't know, three, series of road intersections and signal evaluation proposal for O H M advisors for about not to exceed sixty-five hundred. Someone wants to make a motion to do all our part of that? You recall in the last meeting, we had a little song out and we asked them to break out the different tasks so we had a sort of idea on what it was going to cost for each of the five, four tasks.
Oh, I'll move approval of task one, Main Street to Baker with an estimated cost not to exceed one thousand three hundred. Because I figured it's easier to go one by one.
Zach, second by Griffin for task one.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, task one is different on the O H M memo than it is on the staff memo. So we're all.
Yeah.
All right. And I just wanted to make sure we were all clear. Thank you.
Zach.
Yeah, so my question is what would deliverable be for this? That we should do it or not do it, or how long the delay would, or how we can affect it so that there's delays at different times of day or someone hits buttons? What's, what's the end product going to be?
I think, I think that, I mean, I think all of the above. I think looking for number one, what are, what are the current timings? What would the benefits be of changing the timings? Basically, a pro and con list of what changing the timings could achieve and could potentially cause. So, you know, without, without having gone through the study, I think, you know, what, some of what it's going to say is if you increase the pedestrian phase, it's going to have an impact on the traffic base. Just as, as an example. But basically generating that, that pro con and giving city council the option of evaluating what the potential results are or the potential impacts are of making that change.
Is it going to go into feasibility with our equipment? I think we have relatively old.
I think we would have to. Well, so we actually did, did just, I believe we just upgraded the box at Main and Baker, if I'm not mistaken. So it does have a greater functionality than it, than it did a couple of years ago.
Or currently, if I'm standing at any one of those corners. I don't have to hit the button right now to get a crosswalk, right?
It, I believe it will eventually turn to. Oh, you don't.
You don't know.
You don't.
Yeah, you don't have to, right, right.
Versus at so broad and broad in main, you do have to put the button in order for the pedestrian to to turn on.
Okay, well, so, so, so all of this, you know, is all we're discussing here is you know, is a consistency thing to me and, and expectation and how you're training people across the street, what they do. Like if, if, if we're concerned about traffic congestion, which at times we've talked about, at times you've said it's okay. But if you're not worried, I mean, if you want to make the car move, it's not the impacted when there's nobody there. You don't want every cycle to have a leading pedestrian interval automatically. You want it to be, you want the people to actually have to push the button to cause the delay.
Yeah.
Okay, most people are not going to be expecting that because for years they don't have to push a button across the street. They look up and they see the little those two block symbols and then you go or it automatically turns and they keep walking, but it's not, you know. So there's a mindset that happened here that we're talking about. I'm not saying that just by implementing the study, we don't learn something about one of the two through thirteen hundred, but we have to be prepared for the why is this intersection going to be like that and everyone's aren't and they're not that far away. We're talking about one intersection where you just, right? I'm not talking about a lot, but we only have to push buttons in over six locations and I'm not sure how important this leading pedestrian interval is or what. Well, it's a great, it's a great tool when in the right spot, but then have to be careful with that, that's all I'm saying.
Well, my wife crosses that street quite frequently and it's very easy to get hit by people who are shooting through it, even taking right-hand turns. She does, when possible, she does not cross at the intersection. She crosses at the alley because she has more time to see people. Gotcha. So this alley or this, this intersection is tough. I would say I agree that I prefer, and this is preference thing, I prefer for the, the leading to be activated with a button. I say that because in Ann Arbor where they instituted it all downtown now, people expect that there's going to be an extra three to four seconds after the red, which means the yellow leads into the red, which isn't desired. We will have to let folks know, we can do video, do stuff with our newsletter somewhere until we did and we added the flashing beacons for the school crossings.
And I'm not against it. I'm just saying that it's a popular trend to implement these, but it does take you know, people will actually stand there and just watch it not turn when the button's right there. But there's the communities that have to put signs up that say, push the button to cross because it will turn, it will get to the crosswalk signal less than.
And I agree that they ought to be consistent throughout. I, I would like to see the, the, the leading red extended future to other ones. This would be a good place to start. I would like to continue to see the, the walk regardless of whether or not you hit the button, but the button to activate the bleeding red. Because that's, that's true to know that there is someone there that's going to benefit from that.
Yeah, and my, my first thing on that is I, I think if we looked, if we're actually looking at it at this intersection, you'd do it at both broad and this one at the same time. Those two are the last hair or the busiest part to go together. But just.
One, one more question.
Sure.
Uh, it's my understanding that there was going to be a study to the lights from Island Lake all the way to Zeeb. Could this be incorporated as part of that or interfere or?
So, so the idea is that that would be a part of the C M A C grant that the county has applied for. I think that they are not necessarily looking at that until twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
So it's, it's a ways out.
I will say that. Thanks.
Okay, so we have a motion by Zach, second by, I believe, for task one, to evaluate task one.
Ah, Rob, yes, cousins.
Yes.
Fisher, yes, Hubbard, yes, Michelle.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We'll move approval of task two, best extra Ann Arbor Road at Danholy, cost not exceed two hundred fifty dollars. On the OHM memo. Any discussion on this location or the scope services? Just to clarify, the deliverable will be, we should extend the walk cycles, basically, or not? What, you know, what the double was, what's like for this one?
Correct, yep, so, so similar in that, looking at how long is appropriate for the walk signal to give someone the chance to get from basically the Dexter Propping Plaza to bushes and bushes to bop on team, that, that intersection and how appropriate it is for the length of time that it crosses the road.
And would it be fair to presume that the, the calculations will consider that it is a school route, even an official school route, but it is a route?
We can, we can ask them to state that in consideration.
Griffin, yes, Fisher, yes, Michelle.
Yes.
Ah, Rob, yes, Hubbard, yes, cousins.
Yes.
Kyo.
Yes. Thank you, motion carries.
I have to have to share thoughts on the other two, but I'm not prepared to.
Okay, all right, it's like we're doing, that's one test. Introduction of the guidelines, clarifying that the hardship is two point two times the federal poverty level. Which I think some of the math has, but some of the text doesn't.
The map wasn't correct, but the guidelines themselves.
No motions are, no motion by Zach to approve the I think technically it's, we have forwarded and supported resolution on page ninety.
Yes, yep. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Marie, just how, what impact the change you mean last year got on either number of people requesting the hardship or impact on
We only had one person request a hardship in twenty twenty, we did not have any in twenty nineteen. The person that requested in twenty twenty would have probably qualified for justice.
On page ninety nine of our packet, it says page four, four here. It, it looks like some touching up there with the, the factor that underneath the table, it says by factor two. And it looks like the math is also by factor two, so that.
On the, on the application?
Yeah.
Huh, okay, I'll correct that.
Other questions?
Yes, Hubbard, yes, Fisher, yes, ah, Rob, yes, Griffin, yes, Michelle.
Yes.
Kyo.
Yes. Special in the Parks Recreation, Mill Creek Park, your request.
We can kick this off.
Sure.
And Jamie, can you correct me if I, if I say anything wrong? So at the last meeting and meeting before, Parks Recreation Commission discussed further their desire to proceed with having a more comprehensive design completed on Mill Creek Park Door. As a part of that, city council approved the Parks Recreation Commission's request to contract with Smith Group to perform that design. But the commission was interested in, in bringing them in after we've had a chance to do basically an internal evaluation by inviting folks from different boards and committees to participate in design discussions. First at their own committee level, and then bringing representatives from those boards and committees to Parks Recreation Commission to basically report back what the discussion was at those forums and committees. Bring everyone together and have a more intimate discussion with those representatives and the Parks Recreation Commission to kind of flesh out.
Are they talking joint meeting?
Not, not a full joint meeting, as, as you would think of, you know, inviting all of the members of Planning Commission to participate with all of the members of city council, but more a joint meeting of the representatives up to two representatives from each board and committee to attend Parks Interact, given, given update or detail of what was discussed at, for example, City Council or DDA. Give that to the Parks Recreation Commission and then have those two, two, up to two representatives continue to participate in the design discussions as we move forward with inviting Smith Group in to kind of hear what everyone has to say and put that into some sort of draft design and work with the Parks Recreation Commission and representatives from the working committees to put together something that is representative of what everyone had in mind.
So when, when does the Parks Commission want to have this large?
So, so, so they were, they were looking at, at the February, at their February meeting to invite folks from Arts Culture Heritage, DDA, City Council, Library Board.
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
Okay, so we have either this meeting or next meeting to choose the two people and to have a discussion of our board on those questions, so that those two people could take our input back.
That's the idea.
So we can either talk about this a little bit tonight, if people thought about it. If there are people that are interested in being the two people, we can get volunteers for all of it. Have this discussion next meeting and choose the post.
The third Tuesday, right, in.
So that is the So. So. We can wait till that meeting too, I suppose, if we wanted to pick people and come up with our, refresh everybody's memory, what, what to say the next day. How do you want to handle this? Do you want to think about it a little bit and have a discussion on the next meeting?
I think we should send Alex as one of those people. I'm not serious. Absolutely.
Would you want to do that, sir?
I would be willing, maybe in honor.
All right. I'm going to throw a question up there, my apologies for the monkey wrenching. So the question is, is it perhaps premature for us to look at the design of this park before we know whether or not we're going to have a fire station there for the next fifty years? And I say that because if the fire station is there, there's going to be a significant expansion to it that could affect the entrance to the park and a significant amount of the parking down below will be required to support that building. And so the, the availability for public to access that park could be affected depending on which way it goes. And so I just wanted to throw that out there for for conversation or thought or not thought. So. When this came to us in November, I was thinking that the Parks Commission was thinking that the active area that is currently filled with the swing set, playground and the rock, which is and such is sort of old and a bit stale and could be elevated. I wasn't really thinking that it was super expansive, I guess. I mean, not, you know, in terms of like, for example, even if the fire station wasn't there, the driveway down, there's still probably a driveway down, not filling that area up to grade on Main Street. I'm giving you an extreme, that's an extreme example. And I agree with that assessment, is I look at these questions, they seem much wrong, of what's going to be there. Yeah, I, 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 that was going to be my comment on this, it seems like this is actually beyond where I thought. But I'm not, I'm not upset with the questions, we can answer the questions, I was just thinking that the focus of what was going to be was sort of that central area there between the sidewalk that goes up to the stairs, so to speak. You know, the bisective. That doesn't mean that getting input from the library and others, that's not a good idea, I'll deal with all that.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the conversation in Parks definitely evolved, and so I joined sort of midstream. And I think the original thought was there was this hundred thousand dollars in the budget, they wanted to make some improvements to the, specifically to the play structure that was already there. How it's too small, they couldn't get a lot of kids on it, there was nothing to do for older kids, and sort of that conversation evolved to maybe unlike what happened at Lion's Park, where it was sort of like picking and choosing what specific playground features he wanted, and then the company designed it and you just sort of like put it on a square piece of ground. We thought something more was appropriate at Mill Creek North because of how unique the spaces and everything else that's happening there, and I definitely get the point that Doug is making, and that's something I have struggled with too. And I, yeah, I guess I'm just sort of coming to terms with the fact that when you're work, you know, working in a city, there's something that are not everything's being planned at the same time, and so you have to, yeah, figure out how you accommodate things that are midway through, something that are, you know, are five years from happening. My sense is with, you know, in terms of how these questions, I did get the sense, you know, I think Parks and Rec did talk about that too, of that, you know, what's happening fire station, because I think some people on Parks, they're doing this public restrooms and want to be great, well, we repurposed that building, that would be your public restroom. So I think they stopped short of recommending certain actions like things like public restrooms, you didn't really waiting on what's going to happen with that building. My sense of this was really still more like a green space type. Somebody on Parks made the suggestion, oh, could you do some sort of little treehouse thing with the slope coming down from the farmer's market? And so my sense of it was things still on, you know, behind the fire station and moving that way and and still more related to active recreation, but just how can we capitalize on the unique features of the space in a way that's intergenerational and really making the park a gem. I did get the sense that any recommendation, I mean, I can see how recommendations could be potentially different if, if that building is there or not there, or what's happening with it. And I mean, I think ultimately the recommendation is that, or we've approved something like fifteen thousand five hundred or something like that for this initial plan. So even if we were to get this plan and it seems like, I could, you know, and if there was a agenda that this could be something that would need to be done in phases. So I think we're still open, it's not, this would be like one plan and then it would have to be implemented right away, it could be something that we're asking for them to and this is what we're looking for the input on from the different boards and commissions. Is it something we'd want to implement in phases and maybe we start in the far end or, you know.
And, and, and build on that, whereas it did kind of start as limiting focus to, you know, how do we improve, improve this playground? The conversation kind of shifted to, if we're, if we're going out to solicit feedback from other boards and committees, are we limiting ourselves by asking, how do we improve, improve this playground versus, maybe there's some really good ideas out there on how do we improve the space more generally? Whereas, you know, what Park Traxi is, you know, a playground, maybe somebody else sees you know, we, we, we have, we have the idea of somebody coming in with ping pong tables. That may not have been an idea that Parks and Rec generated internally, but maybe that's still something that is appropriate for that space. In the person, the Mill Creek Park master plan, in, in the first iteration of it, there was a kind of a, a site map that showed a switchback sidewalk coming down from Main Street along the slope down to the park. Maybe, maybe, maybe that's an idea that somebody wanted, if, want to bring. You know, there's the, the, the treehouse idea that, you know, was generated, so maybe, you know, Parks and Rec was looking at it and wanted to, to, to let people think bigger than.
I mean, as I went through this packet, I saw these questions, and I think these questions in some form could potentially go in the public survey. And Parks and Rec not too long ago did a master plan survey, so I think it's worth revisiting, any feedback we got in the master plan survey. I think looking at that, looking at this, and that's something to put in the community survey this spring.
I, I just want to be clear that I think these are fantastic questions to ask, and it's fantastic to ask them of a wider group.
I will say that's a compliment to Justin, Parks and Rec is having a, a pretty, you know, a good conversation, and he took what we how we were talking about it and formulated his question sort of on the fly, so.
Thank you.
That could be shared with the Parks Commission, which is considerably away from where you're supposed to be on the question, so. How would, how might it still be used to understand the area that it's talking about? It's, it's an extension. Okay, all right, so tell me the agenda of the next meeting, please. Okay, we are on page four of the agenda. Of our last new business item, M three. Integration of Fifth Amendment for the Grandview Commons Master Deed. Based on the information provided by the applicant, staff, the city attorney and OHM, and reflected in the minutes of its January tenth, twenty twenty two meeting, I move to approve the Fifth Amendment to the Master Deed of Grandview Commons dated November twenty second, twenty twenty one, and replat number five to the subdivision plan. Exhibit B drawn to the Master Deed of Grandview Commons revision dated January fifth, twenty twenty two, subject to the following conditions. That the pedestrian pathway easement shall be provided for administrative review of the preliminary zoning compliance application for the building in phase three. The applicant shall obtain a temporary construction grading easement from the adjacent property owner to the west. And staff or O H, and the conditions outlined in staff and O H M reviews dated January fifth, twenty twenty two.
Can I make one suggestion, suggestion to both motion makers? For item two, we have the shell obtained a temporary construction grading easement for the adjacent property owner to the west. And we have to say, if determined to be necessary.
Yep.
Who's determining to be necessary?
Well, so my, my view of this is that at some point in time, there's gonna be a building permit issued for one of the three buildings along the west perimeter. And Steve, and I know that because I sat in this room, because he was just, you know, with me with Paul. And Steve told us that when he goes to build the building, he's gonna wanna build the sidewalk adjacent to the property line. That's adjacent to that portion of the building. So the buildup, his obligation is a sidewalk along three properties, or three buildings that are on that west property. I would assume that when he goes to do that, because that's a public, that sidewalk's for the public, we're gonna wanna inspect it. Which means we will ask for the concrete line to be state. Concrete line happens to show that there's trees that need to be removed or how many slope board he has to grade that would be required at the time, to say, if the temporary grades, they're not coming up constructors.
What, so? What if there are no trees? The work has to be done right up to the property line. And based on the experience that staff is having with buildings happening, for example, in Western, where you've got five and ten feet between a property line and a house being built, there's contractors can't work within that space, and they're ending up trespassing onto the neighbor's property, and it's causing problems. I'm trying to make sure that we head off problems that don't affect the property owner.
I, I, what I'm saying is you will have the right to ask for it as a, as administrative oversight when when the preconstruction for that walk goes, and we go and look at what's gonna be installed.
So.
So we say if it's needed, and you can determine, I mean, I, I'd ask any of us right now, can you can tell where the property line is right now? You can't, there's so much there, but you it, it, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a fair request that he's gonna have to provide it. I just think it should, I think we should give ourselves the flexibility to say if it's needed, because if it isn't needed, if it's clear that the, the sofa since it's there is not in, on the, on the property line, and he can construct it where it's flat, he hasn't got a need one. But if, if it goes right through the trees that I think need to come down, he's been a need one. So all I'm saying is I think we should, I think we should modify that to say if needed.
So then I think you also need to then say who's gonna make that determination.
If, if needed, as determined by the city. I mean, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to know where, you're gonna have to know where the property line is, we can do the structure right, but we're gonna oversee the, just like if the, what you say, if this was a water main going along the west property line. We wanna make sure we understood where the water main is going, right?
Correct.
So we'd have, we'd know where the easement's gonna be, so when it was staked out, we could see that it was being put in the easement. This is no different.
Okay.
I, 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 I think by opening that up, the contractor, the property owner, who we are going to require get an easement, is going to say it isn't needed. And if, if it's up to staff to say, yes, it is needed, he's going to argue with staff saying that it is not needed. And then.
Well, we're approving, we're inspecting it though, right?
Well, generally, you wouldn't inspect it because the easement will not be transferred until after the project's completely recorded from afterwards.
Well, we inspect the water main before the easement gets officially recorded.
This isn't a water main.
It's the same, it's, it's an asset.
It's going to be, but until it is given to us, it is still his property, and it, it isn't inspected now, it's not, they're, they're apples and oranges.
So we have no intention of inspecting the sidewalk then, sorry, Doug?
The sidewalk would get inspected after it's put in, as far as I know.
This, Dan would get inspected, it's like a little waste. I don't necessarily disagree with Michelle at all. I mean, we don't know right now if the sofa fence on this property or somebody else's.
Exactly.
Huh?
I agree.
Okay, sure. I mean, something's gonna have to be put in there that he's gotta locate the survey state, or like Justin said, it's gonna be back and forth all the time. So I kinda hate where she's going, just kinda net this in the checklist, you know? Because any time that we're putting anything in, we're close to another property, we gotta get some kind of grading. All, all I'm saying, all I'm suggesting, all I'm suggesting is that if we if we, if we approve this with the potential that it's not needed, the, the building owner may not have to incur the cost of developing a legal easement. I think we all agree it's likely that there's gonna be one that's needed. But it gives the opinion that we're not dictating it unless it's needed. Otherwise, we're telling him, go spend it, go spend the money and get it. And that's, that might be justified, as you said, you don't know where the property line is any better than I do, or you know. I haven't walked the west property line. And I spent a lot of time walking that property. So what, what I'm saying is, like any other project where it was gonna be done, at the, at the point at which he's gonna start it, you would have him state the property line. And it's gonna be pretty obvious that to do what he needs to do, he's gonna have to go across another property, and if we have the condition that says he has to get one, and if it's needed, we say, look, we put it as a provisional, provisional approval. But it doesn't, it doesn't force him to do it until it shows the need.
Yep, I, could you just clarify, I'm looking at page one nineteen. It looks like that sidewalk is right at the property line. Is that a fair statement?
It's, it will be one foot off. The, the way the easing is, it's a ten foot wide easement, the less bounder that easement is on the property line. Constructed halfway, the hard surface will be eight feet, so you have one foot on either side.
And it's not dead flat, as I recall, there is some topography. There's gonna be, need to be some grading.
Correct.
It's awfully hard to keep grading within exactly one foot. I, I understand that there is cost to getting the, the easements, but they could have designed this project differently to allow more space to keep any grading and changes on the property, so I'm, I'm not comfortable with the as needed, I think the way it's designed, it's, you're gonna have to get that permission, because you're gonna be put in dirt. That's all.
So I just wanna throw out there that at the planning commission meeting, there, you know, Allison Bishop was there on behalf of Mayor Brower and didn't seem to have a problem with this, so they are aware of it. They seem to be fine with it. I do understand the idea of not wanting to dictate things, but I feel that if our staff is concerned that it may create unnecessary friction on the administrative side of this project, I'm, I don't think I'm comfortable adding that either.
Okay, just so you know, there's already a pumpable friction on, on this property between this applicant and the city.
Well, more than I guess.
It's existed for as long as he's done projects in the city. He called, he called me on Thursday, or Wednesday, whatever it was, when did I call you? And said, why did the planning commission impose a, a dictate an easement? They've had the plans for this that we approved years ago, why is that condition coming up now? Okay, and, and so I said to him, well, I don't know anything about, you know, where it is, let me go ask the question, and I saw Michelle on the weekend on Sunday, she was in the office doing some stuff, and I would stop up to drop off late Christmas, I guess. Nonetheless, I asked her the same question, Zach, that you're asking, which is where is the thing? It makes logical sense to me that there's gonna be one, and I drove by there today, and, you know, when I looked down, I think the property is between the blue house, however, it's a pretty wide spot where there's like, there needs to be trees. But there, there's already friction. Okay, and I'm just suggesting that it gives the impression that we're not forcing him to spend the money unless it's needed, and I trust that staff can say it's needed. Once our, you know, I'm a little disturbed that we're not planning to inspect it, I mean, sidewalk was put in across open terrain with certain things underneath it, certain
So.
Certain subways, I'd wanna, I'd wanna see that, I don't wanna go walk out and see the concrete at the end. And I'm not saying that's what we do, because we do that really well in the right of way, I know, I know they know how to do that.
Let me clarify. This staff doesn't inspect that. O H M will inspect the the, help me with this, Dan, it's the form, or the, the, the subbase, the form, and then the final service, right? There's three, there's three aspects to sidewalk. Excuse me, O H M will do that as part of construction services.
And if O H M can't do it, we can, we can also provide a service, we'll work together with them on all this property.
Right, that's what I said.
We're gonna get, it's not gonna be inspected all the way through the whole project.
And we've done it too, they said. They're, they were gonna go and do it, she said, O H M was gonna do it, I've had it fill in for them, and they couldn't be there for the, for this specific project, so.
But it's been going on for years through the new subdivisions and other places, right?
Correct, but understand that inspection of that first, what's the first part, is it the base or is it the form?
It's the base, the new base, that's the form.
That happens after they've already done work. So if the grading's happening and you don't have that easement in place, and there's been trespass, that pulls staff into rectifying the situation by requiring the, the property owners to work together on this temporary easement. It takes staff out of this private property dispute, just letting put this, put the structure in place. It relieves some of that tension that we addressed earlier between the property owner and the city. It just takes us out of it, it's almost like a relief felt in some ways.
I understand, it takes us out after we put it in, because we didn't require it when we approved the job.
Correct.
We could have done it at the beginning of the project, like what, we could have said, you didn't get a
Absolutely. And we can also say that Mr. Dalla could have designed the project, so he didn't have to modify the porches and the driveways as he's doing currently before he was able to get this amendment. We can both go back and forth with that. I'm not trying to do that here, I'm just trying to rectify and make sure that we don't have situations going forward that would just exacerbate already, already high tensions.
Just, just. I'll be interested to watch out, please.
Well, I'm convinced. I have one comment. Unrelated, but you mentioned West Ridge, like residential development. You mentioned West Ridge and residential development and small, so the same thing happened to us in Dexter Crossing, we didn't build one next to us. But barely, you know, the sidewalks are five, six feet, and we had their trucks going up and down, destroying our lawn, causing water drainage problems, et cetera. So whatever, in the future, I understand this might be difficult to implement in a project, but whatever staff is able to do to make sure, I don't know, to what extent they get involved or don't get involved, it's kind of a headache for us.
Which is part of the reason, remember, when we spaced their redevelopment, and we made them put the, the construction fence up on the property line so that none of their constructions happened on the type of property.
Right.
And that project worked out very well.
So I appreciate that staff is trying to change that in the future.
And the parallel Jamie here is that on the, on the work between two properties where we don't have an easement, our eyes are not gonna be there. But when we're either in the public right of way or in an easement that's gonna eventually be called as this is, our eyes are gonna be there because it's gonna be our easement, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to have it so we can win, so prior to the work occurring in the easement area, we can dictate the terms, I D, but I understand, okay. Not a lot of change the motions, so we so we're gonna move by that, second by law, to approve the motions on page one oh four. Pam, please, I'll vote to approve the motion.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Arra?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Cover?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Your job, the council comments, Pam.
I will start without this time, sorry, I forgot your last time. Unfortunately, I have no comments.
All that buildup?
I know, I'm gonna say.
Thank, no, it's also, thanks for, um, for the next, for the next meeting, so. Paul, turn down. Okay, wow.
Thank you.
Now?
Yeah, a couple of days, I think the Dexter Crossing can use one of those speed radar meter thingies for, for a while. There have been many of the residents in Dexter Crossing, especially Wellington Drive, that have been concerned about the speed of cars going, so something that can show people they're driving a little bit too fast might be helpful. I was very encouraged by the way our conversation about fire station went. So that was really nice to see, and some exits that's coming out of that. And just to kind of clarify what I was thinking in terms of the problem categories, if you don't mind, I will submit some of my thoughts for the next meeting. Thank you.
Good thinking.
What about Zach? No, I never heard it, yeah, that's right, okay. Yeah, just a couple of thoughts on the street topics that we didn't get enough, we discussed, and I wanted to make a motion, which is fine, I think at Fifth and Dover, I think I personally like to see, I mentioned it earlier in the meeting, I'd like to see increased enforcement before we do something different there, some of the board discussions within the weekend. I think in some, maybe a side conversation I had with Justin, we talked about potentially adding a stop bar on Dover, that's that white bar that sort of tells people where they need to stop at the intersection. So I'd be curious to know what that process entails, what deposits, if those are effective, that sort of thing. Regarding Dexter and Arbor at Meadowview, I was just starting with the library this afternoon, and I see that back of a trap, back of traffic there that we're talking about. I'm torn on that issue, clearly, the issue is school traffic, and the same thing happens on Van Colly, just that there's no stoplight, and so the issue is that you have all these people sort of coming from downtown Dexter and turning right to Mill Creek, and then you've got the people on Dexter and Arbor who wanna go left. I think even if you grade them the protected left turn, or whatever you wanna call that, the dedicated left turn, you still just have that right, the cars turning right queuing up and not leaving a gap, so even if they had an arrow, I don't know where they would go. I don't really know what our role is in dealing with traffic jams that are caused by this school. Anyways, so I, I don't know if we ever engage them on those issues, if we love to learn about traffic that relates to school, like if there was a business that was causing a big traffic problem, but I don't, so just some thoughts about that. And I think whenever we see proposed renovations for thirty five fifteen Broad, and we just released that big package, I'm wondering if it would be possible to have an itemized list of the proposed renovations with some sort of priority level assigned, I don't know if that's something the user group would do, or partners in architecture would do, meaning are there things that we know are necessary before occupancy because they're related to, you know, safety or, you know, basic functionality or something like that, or the things that are necessary within the first year? I would like to see that if, if possible. And those are my thoughts, thank you.
Just so I'm clear, on the Fifth and Dover, what do we think is the problem?
So the complaints I'm hearing, it sort of seemed like twofold, people not stopping at Dover as they're crossing this.
Okay, so that's, that has to stop.
So, so that would be the stop bar, but then I think there's also speeding down Dover. Or I mean, that's, yeah, speeding down this because of a cut through, which is maybe where the idea of the four-way came from. So maybe two issues, rolling stop signs and speeding.
Okay, and the rolling stop sign, that.
Yeah.
Zach, then. Yeah, I've actually witnessed two accidents at that intersection where they painted my house in the summertime. So I'm gonna vibe on Um, so I'm going to vibe on the street thing. And so sometimes we look to engineering solutions as we've done today with traffic council and timing and stuff. Sometimes it's design and that's kind of outside of the scope, you know, like we were discussing the, the speed. On Ann Arbor in front of Dexter Crossing in bushes, you know, one of the things that I've been thinking is if we painted all our, our, um. Bike pass with that green that you're seeing up, that has a psychological impact that now the space is separate and distinct. It's so just kind of asphalt. So I. Would love to have the conversation of, of how we can do design details to. To signal the folks that speeds are different in, in here. So I'll give you the example. Um, go into Ann Arbor in your mind. You're on Jackson on the west side within the four lane section. Think how comfortable you are driving forty miles per hour there. Most people are not. If you follow that through downtown and get out to Arborland, it's the same speed limit, but I guarantee you're going to be driving fifty miles an hour through there. So it's just that there are lots of things we can do, um, outside of just the, the regular engineering. Um, since I don't have to worry about setting agendas or talking with the fire chief, I am going to be the conduit to bring some things we've been discussing there. Um, at the end of this year, we're going to have the fire runs for all the different communities and that stuff. I'll be able to bring that over. And one of the things we've been discussing, I've brought it here is cost recovery ordinance. I'll be bringing that here just introduction. On page thirty four, this isn't high priority, but I noticed, um, that the Cedars is not in the tree canopy area. And so I'm curious if that was. On purpose or just omission, or if they're responsible for taking care of the trees again, just something for the future. And since we have the ice rink, I can dazzle you with some Zamboni ice technician details that you can go and tell your kids. The typical ice sheet in an N H L rink is three quarters of an inch thick. At community rinks, uh, such as vets or the ice cube, it's an inch and a half to two inches. That's just so you can wear down and beat it a bit more. Uh, the Zamboni blade is six feet long. And if you fill the entire bucket from a fresh sheet of ice. With no snow on it, you've removed a little under one sixteenth of an inch from the surface. And if you know what you're doing. You can tell if the blade is off by two sheets of paper from one side of the other. Uh, one more dice bit here, um. A fully laden Zamboni weighs six tons, which is about three F one fifty trucks. That's all. Thank you.
Those of us who need them.
And, and also how, how does that stop those darn figure skaters from putting divots in the ice?
You can't. You, you contact Mr. Glue. The only option.
Okay, we are back around in that range for this session. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any topic? Or online? So you know, I will see the motions are due.
So move.
Bye. Thank you all those in favor. Thank you, those opposed. Have a great week, pay two weeks.
You take that mask. Okay, it's a fun mask.
I have some.